Evening, everybody. Welcome to the Select Board meeting, Monday, May 15, 2023, Waquot Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. Broadcast live on the local cable channel 18, stream live on the Town of Mashpee website. It is now 6:31. I'd like to convene the meeting in open session and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
I'd like to have a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. Can I have a consideration for minutes approval of the following Monday, May 15, 2023, regular session and executive session?
Please. So move.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Mr. Whedon? For a vote?
Vote.
Oh, yes.
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 And I'm a yes. Point of the hearings. We have a public comment. We have five people for a public comment. Can I have Susan Dangle, please?
Is this on? Yes. Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Susan Dangle, 762 Kattuitt Road. I've been before you before, many times actually, since the summer of 2021. And I have to say tonight, I'm very anxious, I'm very agitated about what's going on with our water. On May 22, on the Mashpee Clean Waters website, there was a question from a resident asking if it's okay for her kids to swim in Mashpee Pond. I explained the situation very clearly and calmly and explained that we are doing testing and where she could look for anything having to do with cyanobacteria or E. coli. She chose not to swim. The risk is too great. On May 26, Amy Squealia, who might be in the room, I'm not sure, she posted a video. I think you should see it. See if I can bring this up. There's no audio, so I'll try to tell you what happens here, if I can get it to go play. She's a paddleboarder and she is on the Mashpee River. This was just a week ago. She's coming up against nitrogen-fed algae. She's going to get down on her knees and show you exactly what it looks like. Notice what it looks like. And she keeps going deeper and deeper and deeper. This is in May. This is in May. It's cool. It's cold. No one's here yet. So I took to calling a drone photographer. Let me cancel out of this. I took to calling a drone photographer, Josh Goldstein, in Forestale, and told him that I wanted to come here tonight to show aerial footage of the Mashpee River. I asked him if he could do it today, Thursday, because we were going to be into some bad weather. He dropped everything and did it. So here we go. I had... I had the Titanic music playing to this so that it would really get you, but I think it'll get you anyway. Take a look. This is May. Actually, maybe June 1, whatever. It's been there a while. Coming down the Mashpee River into Shoestring Bay and Mashpee Neck. This just gives you another aerial of the Mashpee River. I know, I'm almost done, but I think it's worth looking at Shoestring Bay. Here's the Mashpee Neck Marina. Look at the sides of Shoestring Bay and the middle of Shoestring Bay. They've been out on Facebook talking about the fact that this is criminal. I hear from Rick Otis at Waquoit Bay, it's just as bad. We'd like to get the Quashnet River and Waquoit Bay photographed as well. We need some clearance from Joint Base Cape Cod. This is pretty darn depressing. So we've heard from the DEP about the need for a watershed permit. We've heard from the New York Times that we're a toxic stew. I've called for leadership. Others have called for leadership. Yet, in all of those months, we're almost a year from the time the DEP was here. We have not heard from this board about a watershed permit and where we're at. We haven't heard really about Phase 2 and where we're at. We need action. We've called for action and we really, really need it. I can't imagine what's going to happen when people show up in a week with their kids to rent one of those properties. They're never coming back. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Mary Adams Olexak?
Mary Adams Olexak, 18 Capstan Circle. It's been just under three years since I first came here and asked for attention and got it. We really, I think collectively as a community, educated ourselves on this problem, began to address it. You saw the extraordinary support of the voters for moving forward on this when we approved Phase 1. And thankfully, we've broken ground on that. However, that was just a tiny step forward. And it's very clear, what was already clear when the plan was originally created almost 10 years ago, that this is a serious problem and it's going to multiply very quickly. So what we need to do is come together and work on Phase 2 and have really a comprehensive plan for the entire town. And I know it's hard work and I know you're working on it, but we can't continue to delay every year and let the problem get worse. We've said from the beginning, this endangers our habitat, but it also endangers our economy. And we all want to be part of the solution. We'll support you. We... I've quoted Brian Howes before. He told me early on, it's about the community, the town, the staff, and the scientists. We have the science. You have the community. And now we need your help to get this done. So please, please, give it the urgency that it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Mr. Gottlieb?
Good evening. You've, as a board, rallied behind this issue in the past and shown leadership. You have to do it again. Let me just walk you through the calendar here a little bit. DEP application for funding for next year for wastewater projects went live May 16. And I'll give you this. The deadline for filing an application for that funding is August 11. That would result in a project being selected on or about January 1, 2024. Town meeting vote in May of 2024. Construction then might commence in 2025. Construction period would likely last for Phase 2 through 2027. Most likely date of additional connections and therefore the start of reduced nitrogen loading for this now Phase 2 wouldn't be till 2028. Water quality is not likely to begin to improve from a Phase 2 begun this year until 2030. Missing the filing application of August 2023, which is currently the plan. So our commission is not currently slated to give you a recommendation for Phase 2 until October, means you will lose access to state funding until at least 2025. So a couple of month delay may not seem like a big deal. Costs you over a year. What you saw is disgusting. And it's going to get worse. It's going to get worse this year. It's going to get worse next year. It's going to get worse until enough nitrogen starts coming out of the ground. It's not going to start getting better until sometime in the 2030s. How much longer can we as a community afford to tell people what you saw was okay when we know it's going to get worse and when we don't have something? So my request to you is for your next meeting to schedule a discussion and a vote to do four things. State the board's intent to ask town meeting to fund a Phase 2 in May 2024. Direct your staff to finalize a Phase 2 that can be submitted for funding on the SRF 2024 list by the August 11, 2023 deadline. Direct your staff to prepare whatever funding article for October town meeting may be needed to design enough of Phase 2 to be ready to ask town meeting in May for construction authorization. And vote to direct your staff to develop a financing plan to fund Phase 2 once a construction cost estimate has been prepared. If you wait for this to bubble its way up, it's never going to happen. Too many competing priorities. You have... You know this. You have to tell people, these are our expectations. We want to move on this. There's plenty of time to discuss the details, to figure out the details, but the board has to tell its staff and its other boards and commissions, we're moving ahead with this. This is the schedule. And you figure out how to meet it. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Can you? Thank you. Jay Marie Stevenson?
Jay Marie Stevenson, Chair of the Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee. Totally different subject. Hopefully, very, very positive, okay? We have an absolutely fabulous project going on, exploring diversity through stories and photographs, the immigrant experience in our community. It's a wonderful, wonderful project that is a joint initiative from the Mashpee High School, Mashpee Middle High School, Human Rights Club, and other students, and our committee. Right now, we're in the second year. This is a legacy project that we're going to continue every year. And the second series of this project is now in the public library and will be there through August. Initiated back, you know, we also have the Hall of Flags. It's just been completely refurbished at the high school. And this is really about honoring the people in this community that have come from other countries and are contributing to our community. Our first project was representing 14 different countries in little old Mashpee. Okay. So I would like to see this as an opportunity, and I'm going to ask you as the leaders of the community, if you would put together a reception in which we bring together the Select Board, the school committee, members of the... All the... Department heads in the town and chairs of the committee to come together in a specific reception at the library. Mr. Boor is going to ask the school committee for some ideas on when that would work, what time of day. The library, of course, Kathy Mahoney is fabulous and ready to open the library whenever we decide to do this. And I want it to be an opportunity for all of us to get together not just so much as a presentation, but an opportunity for all of us to actually read these stories and see the pictures and really appreciate what it's all about. And, you know, the other thing that really struck me was that when I, you know, when I was in the local comprehensive plan meeting, there was a desire for committee members to actually cross committees, to cross over. So I see this as an opportunity. If we can get all of us together from different committees and see this and be encouraged by what we see and actually meet each other, you know, have some name tags and whatever. And I want you to know that this is going beyond Mashpee. Very quickly, I'm almost done. We... One gentleman that came to see it actually brought in his granddaughter, who works for the UN and US immigrant programs in Virginia, and brought her here to meet with the students that... To see this project. We're going to be exhibited at the Kattuitt Center for the Arts in beginning of 2024. We've been to Provincetown and joined with other schools there, and we were the main presenters at the Human Rights Academy. This is a big deal, something that we really should be proud of. And I want to get all the people that work for this town, like all of us, together to really, you know, really appreciate this and get together and say, wow, this is really, really good. Now, I would also ask you, Race Amity Day Festival is coming this Sunday, June 11. That's our second biggest project, so please come.
Thank you, Jay Marie. Ken Dobrowski?
You know, last meeting... I got a hand ass this time. Last meeting, I used my entire three minutes. So do I get more time this time around?
Sorry.
So anyway, what I want to talk about tonight is, it started out as an exercise as to why I saw a tax decrease when I was a... My property is above the breakeven level for the residential exemption, okay? It's kind of... And I'll get to that in a minute. Once I got into it, it became an exercise of basically tax policy. And based upon, you know, what you guys just heard, you know, this wastewater treatment thing is going to be paramount. It's coming at you. And Phase 1 used up the 66 million. And so now, anything from Phase 2 and beyond is going to hit the tax base. We don't have the WIFF or whatever it is, and the room tax to fund this stuff anymore. So it's going into the tax base. So, I mean, when you're increasing folks' taxes, I mean, one of the things, I think, that, you know, there's two things. They need to understand why they're doing it and it's a legitimate purpose. The other thing is that it's administered fairly. And that's what I want to talk about today. Okay? Because again, you know, I saw my taxes go down. Intuitively, I shouldn't. And by the way, the property with the single highest value, it's owned by a non-resident, so I have 5% decrease in the taxes. So again, very counterintuitive. Now, the reason that happens is... Okay, I got the time. Okay, the reason it happens is the way we do it, okay? We do it at a very granular level. I don't know... We do it by neighborhoods. I don't really sure how many neighborhoods we have, but we have 130-something tax maps. And there's got to be a couple, you know, neighborhoods within each tax map. And again, you got to remember, this is more art than science. And so let's... Well, let's go back here. I skipped ahead. Go to this thing, right? Okay, I just want to show you the dynamics you're dealing with here. Okay, in 2001, we had about a 4% increase in our assessed value, and it was kind of equal across the board. These are quartiles. Quartile 1 is the cheapest properties. Quartile 4 is the most expensive. In 2022, we went from 4 to 14, okay? And it was kind of even, but you see that the bottom quartiles are inching up there. In 2023, look at that gap, okay? We went up to 21, and now you see a big differential between Q1 and 2 and 3 and 4. And I haven't got... I left out the best part. This 2023 data is two years old. It's lagged two years. The sales data that is driving these dynamics is, again, 2021 sales data. So if you think that, oh, okay, the market turned over the last year and this is going to reverse, uh-uh, okay? You're probably looking at a year or two more of this. So basically, go to... Let me show you what the impact of this is. Okay, I'm just giving you a top line here and I'll sum it up in a second. Okay, this guy right here, okay? 21, 22, and 23 are what happened, okay? The last two columns, because we did two things last year. We instituted the residential credit and we had this market-driven dynamic. What the last two columns does is isolates them, okay? But basically, if we did not do the residential exemption, the folks with the residents below the median would have had a 5.4% tax increase, yet the non-residents would have had a 2.7% tax decrease, okay? And the last column is the impact of the residential exemption. You can see that that kind of went the opposite way. It fixed it. So overall, you look at, you know, what happened is... And what happened was kind of what you expected it to happen. But the key point here is, you know, tax policy has these market-driven dynamics, okay? You do have a tool to manage it a little bit. That's the residential exemption. But my point here is, you know, this thing is going to continue to move on you. It's going to get more important as you load up the tax base. So you can't just put this thing on autopilot. Now, again, I had three minutes. It's complicated. I'm not going to... The only thing I'm trying to do is, you know, get you aware of this thing. If you want to talk about it, I mean, I got the model. So, I mean, I'll take you through it. Wayne, I met with Wayne and Joe and I've taken them through it. But if you guys want to know more about this, and I think you should, you know, just let me know.
Thank you, Ken. Department of Public Works Director Catherine Loret?
Good evening. I am here before the board for approval of some of our annual contracts. The first are a series of service contracts that we went out to bid for this past spring. These are the lowest responsive bidders. Happy to answer any specific questions about a particular recommendation, if you have them. Otherwise, I request your approval.
Are these the same ones that we've used before?
The only change is in the stone. That is a new contractor. Not that we haven't purchased from them before, but it is a new from the last two years.
Does anybody else on the board have any?
Have the rates... Are the rates different this year from last or substantially?
They are. It varies from contract to contract. Actually, our electrical, for some reason, is lower than this current fiscal year, but all of the others did see an increase.
An increase that we can take care of with the budget we approved?
So these are as-needed contracts. So, you know, we budget for services and obviously, if we don't have sufficient funds, then we have to reevaluate our projects.
Make a motion to approve. We have to call the public here.
Yeah, we didn't do it. There's no public hearing.
Yes, so make a motion to approve.
All contracts, including catch basins cleaning, cold planning, purchase and drainage structures, electrical services, equipment rental, fire suppression, quadrials, pulverizing, and stone. Is that all? I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Whedon? Start it up. Carol?
Yes.
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 All right. And I'm a yes. Next up?
Next, our extension of existing contracts. So these were contracts that were bid either two or three years ago, and we are entering into the last year of that contract. So these will be bid next year, but this is just an extension. And it's... I think it's... Some stayed the same. They did not increase this year. Others did see a slight increase.
Does anybody on the board have any other questions on this? I don't...
Motion to approve.
And that motion to approve would be for alarm monitoring inspection, chip seal, crack sealing, elevator inspections and services, generator and PM and service, HBAC service and repair, line painting, paving and related work, plumbing, purchase and delivery sand, street sweeping, and Mashpee Middle High School...
Wastewater Treatment Facility.
Wastewater Treatment Facility.
Second.
I have a first, a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any? Start it up from Michaela.
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. Unanimous. And here we go again.
Next. Next is our fuel contract. So I guess good news this year compared to last year where we did not sign a fixed contract. We basically, you know, paid what the wholesale price was with the delivery fee this current fiscal year. Prices have stabilized. And so we are recommending a fixed contract for both gasoline and diesel for the upcoming year.
Sounds good to me.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would remind the board, it's $3.11 per gallon for gas.
Exactly.
So please approve this.
I know, I was looking at it, I was like...
Please.
Very good. Motion to approve.
I have a first, a second?
Second.
For our first and second? Any comments? Discussion? Michaela?
Yes.
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 I'm a yes.
I'm a yes. Unanimous. And here we go again.
And the last one is for the contract for operation of the transfer station as well as hauling of the recyclables that are collected. This is an extension of the current contract. It did escalate by 4.9%, which was the April CPI. No change in the scope of services.
A motion to approve that one as well?
Yeah, I know.
A second.
First, a second. Any discussion?
I have just a question. You know, there's some residents in the neighborhood behind there that really complain about the odor. And, you know, as part of this, is their operation of the... Is that something separate? That's separate from the operation of the transfer station? What they do in the back with the recycling piece, correct?
Yes and no. So we've always had a yard waste facility at the transfer station because we do, as part of the stickers, we do collect yard waste from residents. So leaves, grass clippings, brush, that has always been part of the operation. We've always composted that material on site. The license that the board had signed allowed some commercial expansion of that operation. But that really was curtailed last year in terms of that, I guess, the commercial. They have no outside contractors that come to the facility. It's only waste that they may transfer between Mashpee and their site in Marston's Mills. But there is always going to be and always has been a yard waste composting facility there. there. And even if that part of the contract was not approved, we would still have a composting area. And I think that's the nature of the complaints from the immediate butters is when you're turning the compost, which you need to do to make sure it's decomposing, there is, you know, an earthy smell, which some people find offensive. But, so it's not an easy answer to the question, just because, like I said, there is, there's the always, the use has always been there with a little bit additional use from the license.
But it's not a new operation.
Right.
It's part and parcel to what we've been doing. And I think the primary item that we were receiving complaints about, as the director pointed out, have been curtailed.
Which was the contractors.
I'm not saying that there aren't complaints, because there are. But it's an operation that we've been continuing.
We have a motion and we have a second, so start off.
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Catherine. All right. Update in the status of cesspool sewer connections and with health agent Zachary Seaberry.
Good evening, everybody.
How comes Zach?
So, an update on the cesspools. We, on the, submitted the, my memo in the calculation that we found out by doing all the research through all of our files that we have through this town. We found that out of the over 10,000 systems in town, only 179 were actually cesspools. That comes out to 1.79% of the Mashpee systems are cesspools. Of the 179, 103 are within 300 feet of a waterway, and 43 of the 103 are within 100 feet of the waterway. In this time period between when this was made back in March and today, I didn't get to go through all of them, but we've already decreased that number by about 10 or 11. Right now, on the docket, we have for approval of three systems to be replaced. A lot of these systems are actually in the Phase 1, where the sewer lines are going down and will be hooked up and decommissioned. In the time period also, we have recreated new regulations for the town of Mashpee that have been implemented and already into effect, where any septic system that is within 300 feet of a waterway, or water course, or anything defined by the Conservation Commission under Chapter 172 of the Mashpee Code, has to be upgraded if it is new construction, increase in flow, repair of a system, has to be upgraded to an IA system within 300 feet of those waterways. We've also started implementing a Title V section that hasn't been implemented, whereas when buildings are raised and replaced, anything that's demolished, once it's been demolished, the septic system is no longer being used and therefore is considered abandoned. So that has to be upgraded. In the past, it hasn't been, that regulation hadn't been used, so houses were able to hook back up to that system. So we've made some great steps on getting IA systems into the ground and replacing the cesspools and Title V systems.
So according to that new regulation, so that's in effect now?
It was into effect April 4th of 2023.
And what are the, the other regulation that you said is being worked on?
No, the other regulation is a state regulation. It hadn't been, it's one of those hidden regulations in Title V out of the 92 pages. It's 15.354 abandonment of systems. A lot of people forget that once a system is disconnected from a house, it's no longer in use, so it has to be abandoned. Once it's abandoned, then it must be upgraded to today's code, which would implement the new IA system regulation, put that into play. Whereas if the house is just remodeled and there's no increase in flow, they were able to use their old system. But now if it's torn down, not connected anymore, it's no longer acceptable.
Question, Mr. Chair, but, I mean, due to the public health emergencies that we're experiencing with the water quality and pond closures and everything else, shouldn't the board take a position that, you know, ban these things? And if people have money to do upgrades to the house, if it's not a full tear down and raise and replace, if they have money to renovate the home and do some sort of upgrades, shouldn't they address and become compliant with current standards for septics? At this point, I mean, that's, I'm wondering how that's factored in when people are pulling permits just to do renovations, not necessarily tear down rebuilds?
Well, the tear down and rebuild is just the Title V code. Our code is anything with increase in flow, an upgrade of a failed system, or a replacement of a failed system. So if it's failed, then it upgrades and it has to go up to today's code. If you have an increased flow or change of footprint, then it has to be, so pretty much anything that has to do, has to be upgraded within 300 feet to an IA system.
So does that include, like, and I love where you're going with this, so, like, what about internal, if there's, they don't change the footprint, but they're applying for a permit?
Increase in flow. Increase in flow. So if there's anything done inside the house that increases, say, another bedroom or anything, then it would have to increase, because that's when the health department gets triggered for that building permit.
How about any permit?
That's kind of where I'm going. I don't know that that's enough. You know, I think we should, we should look into banning them, because it's essentially a public health emergency when we're getting, the lake is having closures in the beginning part of the summer, when, in the deepest lake around here, you know, you're getting cyanobacteria closures, and, you know, I don't know that it's enough. You know, just for the daily load to increase being the threshold, we need to do away with these, they're antiquated systems. You know, our rules and regs are outdated, essentially, and they're not current, with the current, they're not taking into consideration the current standards of our water quality. And so what can we do as a legislative group and, you know, the town to ensure that we're providing safe water quality for our residents? And, you know, it seems like this is falling short, because there's thresholds that have to be met that aren't consistent with the current standard water quality.
So, may I ask a question? So with that, so right now, it's if anybody does any renovations, tear down, rebuild, change of footprint, increase in flow, repair of system. So what you're recommending is that if someone comes in to replace a window for a building permit, we have to see if they have a cesspool or a Title V system?
Within the 300-foot buffer, yes.
Okay. I'll have to, I have to talk with building department.
You know, 100-foot buffer, 300-foot buffer, within those areas, yes, because nitrogen travels that far. We know that. There's knowns that are, that they're contributing factors to the current issues and the quality. And we're not trying to just maintain, we're trying to repair. We're trying to get the water to a cleaner state. We're not trying to maintain the status quo, because the status quo is going to, it's going to be, it's a toxic stew, as has been stated.
And I understand that, and that's why I created this regulation for the IA systems with the 300 feet. But, so, I'll have to go back and talk with my department, talk with the zoning, and talk with the building department about any building permit pulled, even if their system is not in failure to be an upgrade. And I have to talk with my board.
And some of those, you know, zoning and cons common stuff, you know, I don't know if they're adhering to things, you know, we can't be doing things in a minimal sense when it comes to maintaining regulatory authority over projects and permitting. You know, you have to apply the stricter standards, you know, wherever possible if we're going to make any kind of dent in this water quality issue at all. So, you know, that I want to be mindful of and ensure that, you know, the different boards and committees are applying a strict standard when it comes to water quality. You know, we can't be minimal or allowing loopholes to get through, you know, we need strict, we need stronger mandates, is what we need.
Okay. Then I'll ask town manager if it's possible to talk with town council if we can legally make someone that has a window replacement or kitchen renovation upgrade their passing Title V system. I just have to look into that and talk with zoning and talk with the rest of my department and my board about adding that.
And maybe the Cape Cod Commission can come up with, you know, some of the monies that they have for nitrogen mitigation and stuff, you know, there's some sort of funding mechanism to allow for some sort of benefit, betterment assistance or something to help people that are, you know, income qualified to, that need help to do it, you know? If we can explore options for them to help them, because, I mean, I don't want, what I don't want to do is to require them to upgrade, and then we put in a Phase 2 wastewater and stuff, and then require them to tie in down the road. You know, we should hit them once, you know, if they're able to do renovations, then they should fix the cesspool first. You know, you don't get to do upgrades without fixing the cesspool.
So just cesspools?
Well, cesspools are, right now, we're still talking, I mean, there's a lot more.
Okay, just because I had the misunderstanding that you meant every system that's not an IA system, so even if it's a Title V.
No, 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 cesspools. Is my priority concern, based on these numbers, not, I'm not saying we have to force everyone to do IAs. No. You know, if they're upgrading, it'd be great to get them to go to IAs from a cesspool. Yeah, that's encouragable.
Okay.
You know, but to require.
So this is going to put you at ease, that, so what we have is if you do any change inside your, inside the house, you have, you're required to have a Title V inspection done. In the town of Mashpee, Title V inspection with a cesspool is an automatic failure and has to be brought up to code.
Good.
So, so with that, Zach, what authority, or do you have the authority to outright ban every cesspool in the town of Mashpee?
They already are.
No, no, I'm sorry. To ban them and actually force an upgrade?
That I'm not going to say. I'd have to talk with town council about what my authority can do on that aspect.
I would, because, and by no means do I want you to feel like we're attacking you, just so you know. Thank you for what you did, you know, the findings that you came up with for cesspools. You know, we've been looking for that information for years, and it was years. So thank you for that. And again, we're just looking for you to help us to get to where we need to be. I have in front of me, you know, you know, we started off the meeting, to be honest, I was sick to my stomach looking at the videos, so thank you for that, for, I'm a little bit off, thrown off by the videos. But it brings me to this, you know, a map that was drawn about, you know, I don't know what the technical word is, but it's like, it flows that way. So this is, you know, Mashpee Pond, and if we have cesspools over here within 300 feet, where do we, where do we think it's flowing? It's flowing right into the pond. And it's no different than all the ponds and lakes in the town. They all, you know, flow a certain way, and we had results a couple years ago that people that had cesspools didn't report having any of them pumped. I think it was like 75% of them weren't pumped in over 10 years.
Mm-hmm.
That is, like, horrifying. And so every time, you know, someone's flushing a toilet, if you're on this side of a pond, where is it going? And to David's point, 300 feet, that's, for me, I want them all gone. I don't know if we have the regulations to do it, if we have the authority to do it. I do know the bond stable loan program, you, if they're financially unable to, you know, there's 0% interest and it's all, the program is there, that is, they have access to that. It's no different than a Title V, you know, you know, your Title V expires and you have to upgrade your system. I would love to see if Title V systems expire, that your, the least common denominator is a new IA system.
Yep, that's, that's what the new regulation requires.
So, and is that going into effect, like, as of?
It's been into effect since April.
Since April, so every, no more Title V's can be replaced?
Within 300 feet.
Within 300 feet?
Yep.
Right.
Yep, I implemented that. I started the regulation actually before our last meeting. I didn't discuss it because I hadn't finalized it yet, and then had it implemented within a month or two after our meeting.
So, and I'll make my final point, and then I'll pass it over. I'm sorry. And to David's point, as far as, we do need to go, we need to understand Phase 1, Phase, well, we know what Phase 1 consists of. We do need to understand who is part of Phase 2. So with that, we don't know, because right now, the sewer commission is trying to decide whether it's going north of where they are now, or south, or maybe it'll be a mix of both. We're not sure, but I don't think we could put in a regulation and force everybody, because we don't want to force anybody to get a new system from a cesspool to a new IA system if they may be part of Phase 2. So, but at the same time, in the meanwhile, if you can look into what is the possibility of your authority, and whatever it takes to consider a total ban and removal, you know, timeframe, whatever, whatever those regulations are, if you can look into that, that's, that would be great for me.
Yeah. I tried to meet up with our sewer commissioner, or our sewer department, to find out if there was an update on the phases, because, like you said, you don't want to force someone to upgrade to a $60,000 system when they're about to demolish it and put in, hook up to the sewer system.
Right.
I mean, with nitrogen removal, there's not much difference between a cesspool and a septic tank besides the septic tank. It just removes the solids. As far as pumping, it all depends on use of the system. I have two people in my house, I haven't pumped my system in seven years. I have it checked, and it doesn't need to be pumped. But it all depends on use. If you have a family of six people, then you're going to have to pump it a lot more. But I can, I really want to know when that Phase 2 is where it's going to be, so that way I know whether or not I'm going to order these people to upgrade, or if I can say, all right, well, you have three years, so we have to find a way to reduce the nitrogen load that your system's doing right now until you can hook up the sewer.
Thanks, Zach. Tom?
Well, first off, I wanted, when you first started, I thought what you were doing sounded perfect. I mean, you know, you don't want to, septic system that isn't working properly, we shouldn't have it anymore. Septic systems don't, shouldn't, don't belong here any longer. Then you move forward and you have an IA system, at least you're getting some clear, clearing up all the wastewater that is going by again. I thought your approach was great, and like, we all know that eventually we're going to be sewed. We should be sewed throughout the town, but that's a long time down the road. And an IA system might be the answer, if it's going to be 15 years down the road, for some of these tie-ins. And that, to me, I'm all for, but I don't want to pull the plug on somebody and tell them that they have to sign into, like you said, an IA system, if the wastewater treatment plant's, the pipeline's coming down the road in a year. It's just throwing away money. You have to be fair to the residents. Everybody's, we all know what's going on with the town. We're, I don't think anybody's happy with what they see in the waterways. It's taken too long. It's not anyone's fault, it's just a matter of money. And it's very difficult for a lot of these people to pay the bills and come up with the money. But I wanted to thank you for, your presentation was very good. I was very happy with what I heard. Thank you so much.
Kayla?
Thanks. I'd like to echo that. Thanks so much for being so efficient with this and all the work you're doing. We started with the video that has disgusted everybody, talking about nitrogen pollution. And I think we need to keep that in mind, and if we're putting in IAs, when we get into saltwater, we're going to reduce our nitrogen pollution. When we're thinking about the ponds, we need systems, if possible, that are going to reduce phosphorus. So we're not going to make a difference to the pond simply by reducing nitrogen. And I think that's an important thing for us to keep in mind as we move forward.
Is there, is there some sort of phosphorus barriers that they can put in that would prevent the phosphorus from, because the phosphorus only goes, what, 100 feet?
Yeah, phosphorus is more of a solid, so think of it as a metal. It'll go through and it'll, it'll bind to the sand and it'll slow down. Phosphorus, it's a very finicky thing. Right now, there's about three systems and test subjects through the DEP waiting for approval for provisional use. Provisional use means that it can be used, only a certain amount of them can be put into houses throughout the state, and then they have to be tested before they can go to general use, which means that you can add more to the state, because nobody really knows how to remove phosphorus from the area without scraping it and removing it. But all you're doing is just moving it to another location. Whereas nitrogen, you can turn it into an aeration and send it up. What I've been trying to do, what I've had for about two meetings going on, the third meeting, is I'm having IA system companies come into the Board of Health meetings, and just in case the public want to come to it, they can see and learn directly from the company that makes the systems, what it does, how it works, what the cost might be, how big of a system it might be, how loud it is. Because when they ask me, I work with every type of system there is, but I'm not there all the time, whereas these people actually design and build the systems. So we've started an educational program with the Board of Health, so people can come and learn from these companies. We have one called the Sledgehammer that just, they're supposed to be coming either this month or next month to meet. They just put in, at the base at the test center, for their third-party testing. It may remove phosphorus. It's a bacterial component where they put. It's a bacterial, um, component where they put bacteria in and it aerates it. It, um, they generate, they grow, they eat everything, and they've actually been shown to eat some phosphorus. But that's through their own testing, so that's why we have to do the third-party testing. And that's an easy system that I hope passes, because it's a small circular tube, about two feet wide, about four feet tall, and you can just drop it in your regular Title V septic tank, and you're done. Plug and play. But the bacteria has to be regenerated with seeds every time you pump or clean the system. And if you're throwing bleach down your system, you're gonna just make it so you have a fish pump sitting in your septic tank, which can get rid of nitrogen, just not as well. Um, so, as far as nitrogen removal barriers, uh-
Oh, phosphorus barriers.
I mean phosphorus, sorry. Uh, because of, we don't know how far they'll go down based on the soil where you're at. We wouldn't know where to put that barrier. Would we put it down 40 feet? Would it just rub against the side of the poly berry and just go further down and then go out below it? We don't know. Um, I'm sure there's a study of it, but I don't know of that study.
Interesting.
I'm good.
You're good.
Thank you.
I just wanna say, Zach, I, you know, thank you for in such a short period of time. You've come in here and you've, you know, got right to work, so I appreciate that. And, um, I appreciate you, you know, taking everything that you heard today. And, you know, if you can do some homework and find out what you can do, and if you need our assistance to make something happen, I think you're gonna find that it sounds like we, you have support here.
Nope, that's what you hired me to do. That's what I try to do, and that's what I'll, I'm gonna do.
Thank you.
Keep it up, you're doing a great job.
Appreciate it.
Sewer connections?
Yeah.
Do you have questions about that?
Um, I don't, I mean, I, but does anybody have any specific? I, you know, I think it's, it seems to be, you know, I think there was a lot of misconceptions out there or, you know, you know, contractors not knowing, do they have to sign a contractor and things like that? But hopefully that has, you know, through social media, um, calmed people from, you know, thinking they have to sign a contractor now and pay a deposit or something like that.
No, the, we have, we have 20 licensed utility installers, LUIs is what we're calling them. They're licensed utility installers. They are septic installers that got this license to do it, so they've passed our test. They have their liability insurance, uh, and, uh, bonds for, to be able to do it. Um, what we're recommending is to call a couple of them, get different quotes. If you're on a street with a whole bunch of houses all on the same line, we're recommending to talk to your neighbors and get a group, see if you can get a group quote, because the larger companies can come right out. Have the excavator go one house to the next. Have the guys follow behind, working it and just hooking up easily. Uh, we're, uh, changed one part of the regulation for the tie-in, where you'll have to have a cleanout at your house. So that way, if there is a blockage on your pipe going to the main line, nobody has to invade your house and pump from the inside. They can just unscrew, pressure line it down, and clean it out, and it will prevent the backup into your house.
So you actually brought up another question I had. Um, so I understand the plumbing inspector, if I'm correct, just correct me if I'm wrong. Plumbing inspector does the 10 feet from the house?
Yeah, the plum, plumbing department, plumbing code is 10 feet from the house. I'm out past that. We work together all the time on that type of thing, because if the septic system that they're demolishing is within the 10 feet, that's, the septic tank is my, my jurisdiction.
Okay.
But as far as connections and everything, that'll be the plumbing inspector. Uh, so he will be doing quite a bit of work, um, making sure that the fern codes are correct, making sure that the Y-pipe is correct for the cleanout and that type of thing, and going inside the house to make sure that all the plumbing connections, if they did not do exterior from the tank, or they couldn't do exterior and had to reroute from the inside out to the front, that's where he would, uh, be in play.
I have a question. Zach, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have, does each homeowner have to hire an engineer to have the plan made of where their connection comes out?
No, um, so each house, uh-
What is the homeowner responsible for?
Contacting the licensed utility installer.
Okay.
And hiring one. The licensed utility installer will go through and say what they can and can't do. So, say the septic system is out in the backyard. You already have the pipes, all the pipes going down and going out back, but you need-
So you don't need an engineer to draw plans for the, for the company?
So if it gets to this case that I'm explaining right now, they might need an engineer. So they have two options, if it goes out the back, and depending on the pitch to get to it. Uh, they could reroute all the interior plumbing and drill a hole to go out the front if, if the pipe's at, at a proper level. If the tank is out back and you can't reroute it out front, we just have to make sure that it is being able to go around. Now, I'm gonna recommend that you have a, um, engineer do the pitch, or make sure your company has a surveyor that can do it, uh, because you want the right equipment to make sure that you have a two, at least a 2% pitch. Um, that's, that's the, 1% is the minimum requirement for septics. Uh, so 1% would be fine, but depending on how far the run is, um, solids can slow down. And then that's where you get your backup. So, but I'll be going out on every inspection, um, to make sure that they're all in the proper way.
Right.
And that's why we'll have the cleanouts too, just in case it does slow down.
That was good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach, appreciate it. Thanks for coming in. All right. Treasurer, tax collector, Craig Mayon.
Okay, I'll be quicker. I actually thought Mr. Dombrowski was gonna compliment us again.
Looking forward to it.
Anyway, um, so the town is financing wastewater project with the Clean Water Trust. Um, requirement for the fund, financing is a selectman vote to accept the interim loan. Um, the interim loan has a rate of 0%. This loan is required for the town of Mashpee to receive reimbursements of expenses paid in the past and the future. So I'm asking you to vote the approval for the interim loan this evening. Um, I'll have the documents for you to sign after the meeting. Do you have any questions?
I don't. Is this for the 47 million?
Yeah, 47 million bucks.
Okay.
Yeah, um, so yeah, they're just, they, they need an interim loan signed by the selectman. You've already received authorization from the, the town meeting, and, um, it's basically a formality. And then we can get reimbursed for what we've already expended out and asked for reimbursements for.
Sure.
Does anybody have any other questions? If not?
I make a motion to, um, approve the interim loan notes in State Revolving Fund.
Second.
All right, first, and we have a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes as well.
I'll see after the meeting for signatures.
Thank you.
All right. Discussion and certification of the hiring process for firefighters EMT Connor Paltier, Fire Chief Jack Phelan.
You should have, uh, both a, um, memo for the firefighter and for the police officer, uh, affirming that the policies and procedures of the town, uh, were followed, uh, as has, uh, the Human Resources Department. Um, so I can tell you that, uh, all town policies were adhered to, so therefore you'd be certifying the process, not the appointment.
Okay. Any discussion? If not?
Yep. Make a motion to approve the certification of the hiring process of the firefighter EMT. Second.
Second motion.
All right, first, second. Any discussion? Not hearing any?
Yes.
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 Thank you. And now we have the, so, that, that was for fire-
Yes, now we have-
Police.
For a police officer Riley LaCroix.
Interesting note on, uh, this particular recruit. Uh, he's got family that has a house that is apparently going to him in Mashpee. Uh, he's currently a police officer out of state, but he's been trying and trying and trying to get here, and his day has arrived.
That's pretty cool.
That is good. A motion to approve the certification of the hiring process of the police officer Riley LaCroix.
Second.
First, second, any discussion? Not hearing any? It's not enough from Caitlin.
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes.
All right. So we have, um, under commissions and appointment, description is discussion of the following appointment, zoning board of appeals, Sharon Sanglier, um, Member-at-Large. Um, I believe I, I, I did not require them to come in, correct? Um, so, uh, what, in light of, um, boards and committees, maybe, um, maybe not understanding the recommendation process, um, I'd like to recommend that we, uh, postpone and maybe hopefully bring this back up.
She's already a member of the committee.
She is. Um, the only thing is, I, I, to be honest, with, with the, with the way the policy states, um, she's already, she's one of, I believe, two, like auxiliary, non-voting members?
Member-at-Large, right.
So, um, but I, I do think, because we went back to with the CPC, not, not knowing the process, I don't, I don't, I think we should make sure that all the committees in town understand what the recommendation process is, as far as it's not a yay or nay for a particular person. It's highly recommend, recommend, the, the process that's stated in the policy, which I believe is, what, 0079?
001.
001. So-
Strongly recommended, recommended, recommended with hesitation, not recommended.
Correct. Rather than candidates coming in front of us with the, you know, we're appointing, appointing, appointing one or appointing two, um, just making sure that all the committees know the policy, and then they use that to either, you know, recommend or, just so that it's very clear in the power of the policy. Does anybody have any, um, contrary opinion, or is anyone objecting to just? And all I'm saying is, at their, hopefully by their next meeting, they can make sure that they have the policy, that they adhere to it. Um, and again, I think it's just a matter of, I don't think any of the committees have strictly followed the policy of 001. So, um, does anybody have any problems with just? And if it means next meeting, if, if they have, if this is, zoning board, I'm assuming, will meet prior to our next meeting. If they do, um, I, I would just ask that, um, if the town manager can just make sure that the zoning board does get 001, um, to them, they can just, and then it can come to us at the next meeting.
The only thing I'm not certain of is whether or not she was the only candidate. I don't know.
There's, so there's two, from my understanding, and I don't wanna speak for the zoning board, but I believe there's, there was two members. I'm not, I don't know for sure if both are interested. I know, I believe this candidate was the senior, um-
Associate member.
Associate member. So, but again, if they follow the process, if, you know, strongly recommend, we make a recommendation, and it is what it is.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I think it's prudent to make sure that everybody does have the policy. If we're going to hold some people accountable for the policy, we need to implement it with fidelity. So I think what you're saying makes perfect sense. I also think it's important, uh, part of the policy is that the position's posted. So it gives people, other people, an opportunity to bring in the most qualified candidate. Again, I'm not speaking specifically about this board or this person. Might be, she might be the absolutely most qualified candidate, but it's not following the policy. And as you said, I think we've been lax about that. So if we make sure that every board gets the policy and follows it to a T, then we know that we're all set. So I, I support that.
Mr. Chair, um, I, I have to agree. You know, there should be consistency, and if we're going to make requirements, you know, I, I, I actually like the, uh, s- s- short little table that the housing authority put forward with, you know, the votes, the recommendations. You had the four different recommend, strongly recommend, recommend has, recommend with hesitation or not recommend. You know, having that kind of matrix to look at is actually helpful, you know, and will create that consistency. So if that could be incorporated into the policy and, and state that, you know, this is what we're expecting, um, I think it will provide that clarity. And there should be consistency. I have to agree that, you know, every position should be posted before we just assert, um, and, and promote kind of associate members, um, just to create, you know, transparency and show that we're, our willingness to, uh, take on new members.
Right. I, I think it also takes away, you know, it's, if you were voted yes or no, I think it's, it's, it's not a yes or a no. It's, if you're more strongly recommended than somebody else, but I think it's less offensive, because all they wanna do is try to help out the town. And I just think we make sure we get this message of what we expect of all the committees, and they, we should all, they should all follow the same process. So, um, if I can ask, um, if everyone's in agreement, maybe just have, if, um, Rodney, if you can make sure that all the committee chairs get, you know, get all the policy to them, and it's, it's clearly stated how the process should be, and then, is, if they adhere to that, then we can just, you know, fill those spots, hopefully.
I have no problems making sure that they all have it. They should have it, but in case they don't, we'll make sure that they do. Uh, in regards to 001, I can tell you that the spirit and the intent is, selectman Gottlieb-
He left.
He left. Well, that's unfortunate, because I had a conversation with him relative to this. And the conversation consisted of, he didn't want boards, or I should say committees, commissions, and councils to be, uh, spoon-feeding the select board, uh, recommendations. He did not want that. Now, I understand that he's no longer here. There could be a whole new outlook on things. But, um, I remember when that particular policy was drafted, that was the intent. Uh, or at least that was my memory, but I don't like going by memory, so I called him to make sure that that was accurate. And he said, "You're absolutely correct." And the funny thing is, he specifically said, "I don't want the good old boy network from that committee spoon-feeding me somebody. I wanna make the decision." That's what he said. So, I don't care what you do, I just need clear direction, because some people may take it this way, other people may take it a different way. So, if you want a minimum of two and a maximum of three, if those candidates exist, that is exactly what you're going to get. On the other hand, if you want one, then we'll have to change 001, which can be done by vote of the board, and we'll change it, or I should say, you'll change it, and we'll enforce it.
Right. I, as far as, I, I don't wanna speak for the whole board, but I just want, I, I want to adhere to the policy. At this point, till we change it, it's, right now, we're adhering to 001?
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I may, I, I, I agree with, um, previous, um, select board member, Andrew Gottlieb's position, that I, I see it as a recommendation. It's worded specifically that it's a recommendation. It's not, but it does provide clarity, having the table showing that these, these, this is the hierarchy of our preference of, based on our recommendation. But, you know, we have to adhere to the policy as well. As to the selection criteria being met and putting forward the most qualified individuals and all those things, that's doubt, the onus is on us to do that. It's not, I'm, I'm not delegating my, my selection choice to, to them. It's just clarifying their recommendation for, for our consideration.
I agree.
It's just following the policy. And we can choose to amend the policy at some point and follow that policy. We can choose to amend the policy at some point and follow that policy, but for now, this is the policy we have.
Exactly.
But again, they're making their, if you will, recommendation by their, you know, but at the same time, the end result is we still have to make the decision. So, so I think, so we're all in agreement with that? Okay?
So no action on this appointment?
No action. So, next up, discussion approval of the following one-day liquor licenses. All right.
Hello, I'm Peter Murner, excuse me, with Knockabout Brewery. Thank you very much for having me. I am the first applicant on the list here and have a group of my fellow Knockabout staffers slash owners slash leaders here. And we appreciate your time and consideration for our request today. So in addition to myself, we have Tom with the Commons here today. We have Brooke Conley, he is one of the owners of Knockabout. We have Jen Conley, she's Brooke's husband, she's also one of the owners. We have Leif Rotzart, he is our VP of Operations and Manager. We have my mother, Melissa Murner, one of the owners of Knockabout. We have my wife, Margaret Murner, she's one of the owners of Knockabout with myself. And not on the application, but in the back is Craig Moody, he is one of our managers as well, not present tonight. I notified the board was Jeff Conley, he is Brooke's brother. He has extenuating family circumstances and couldn't make it, but Brooke is here in his stance. He is one of the three brothers of the Conley family. So just to give you guys a summary of what we're asking you to consider tonight is, you know, we've, in 2014, we started working on getting the Old Flume Restaurant turned into a brewery and we've been in operation for five years now. So that just passed here in last March. And what we're looking to do is to extend our roots in Mashpee even further by bringing a pop-up beer garden to Mashpee Commons, something that is done in other parts of the state, Seaport and Plymouth, and one of the ways that we're hoping to bring our company to the forefront of Mashpee, Cape Cod, and beyond to showcase our Mashpee-made products. What we're requesting is that we have these consecutive liquor, single-day pouring permits in the names of these individuals that are listed here today because in the town, you can only have one liquor license under a organization's name at a time, at a time. Very similar model is deployed in Plymouth with Mayflower Brewing. At Pine Hills, they have a pop-up beer garden here that has also been in place for a few years and their brew is also located in Plymouth. And this is the same model that they use where they have individual applicants that are associated with the company, pull those single-day permits. This is also a model that has been used in town here with the Rod and Gun Club in the past to pull their permits for their events through the season where they pull consecutive permits in the town of Mashpee here. That's sort of the details on kind of the licensing. You guys have the authority to grant this to us if you so wish. This is a short-term test case that we're looking to run to make sure that the neighbors, the Commons, ourself, and the town are all good with this model. Long-term, we are looking at a permit that the ABC, ABCC issues. It's a bolt-on to our existing permit that we have that is issued through that to board. It's about eight to 12-week process to get issued, but we wanted to make sure before we went through that process that all of our neighbors in the community were good with this model. So this is really our test case to see how this works. The vision is that across from Mashpee Library, we have the beautiful green that is open, that bespoke had their cycling tent on last year. They've moved that now down towards their main facility and that's the area, the asphalt pad that we're looking to leverage this summer for the beer garden. We have a model which we'll scale based on the activities that are already happening at the Commons. So in its smallest sense, we'll be hanging out on that asphalt pad with a temporary pop-up structure. And then if the Commons is hosting programming down at this stage, or if it's a nice day and we want to be able to extend the beer garden out with our fencing to the grassy area, we'd be able to do that. So we've met with our neighbors, the church, we've met with the library, we've met with the housing authority, and the Commons has connected us with the folks that are already tenants there to walk through this plan, to get their feedback, get their input, and have, feel really good about what they're asking us to do to make sure that we're good neighbors to them. Let me just check my notes here, sorry. And so if you haven't been to the brewery before, it's a very family-friendly atmosphere and that's really what this is supposed to be. Brewery is a place that's very inclusive for all ages and all groups. And so we're looking to extend that to the Commons and be able to provide that experience for folks so they can hang out in the sun in a responsible area, leveraging the same techniques that we use at the brewery to maintain quality of experience as well as safety and adherence to the rules and laws, regulations. So from tip certification to carding folks, to having wristbands for folks that are at 21 years old or plus, and then being able to provide a space where people can enjoy the beautiful green. So what we're asking for is a chance to prove to you guys that this would be a great model that we could bring to the town, to bring to the community, since it's already being done in different parts of the state. And we feel like this is a great opportunity that is something that's missing from this community, a cool outdoor area where folks can hang out and leverage what's already happening at the Commons. So we see this as really a bolt-on to what they're doing. They already have great programming, they already have a great family experience. We see this as another attribute that they can have over there without putting a ton of infrastructure or permanent things in place. So take advantage of what's there. In the past, we've done our beach and back road race after-party there with very successful outcomes. And so that would be basically a continuation of that same sort of model. Just a little check here. Yeah, and so all I'm asking for you guys tonight is to consider giving us a chance to give this a go, to provide our opportunity to showcase Mashpee-made products to a wider audience and to continue to what we're doing at 13 Lake Ave and bring a little bit over to the common side of things.
Mr. Chair.
I was going to hand it to you next.
I would be remiss if I didn't add that Peter actually came in and spoke with staff, did a full presentation and made sure that any questions that we had were answered. And we also checked with the ABCC relative to this process. The board has the absolute authority to grant this if you wish to. But based on everything that he came in and presented, which was very detailed, it did appear to be a wonderful partnership. And as he pointed out, it's a short-term test case and there may be other plans in the future, but this is the test case and you have the full authority to grant this.
And just to clarify, each one of these is?
Yes.
An individual?
Yes.
Cost?
There's what, a 28-day?
Correct, I believe so, yeah.
Okay, so there's six 28-days.
Correct. It gets us basically into December.
Right.
And then at that time, if this goes well, over the first 30 days, we apply, we plan to apply for that more permanent license, but that could be eight to 12 weeks. So we didn't want to miss the summer season. So that's why we're here today to give you guys the opportunity to hear this, make sure it makes sense for everyone from a local town government point of view. And if everything goes well, apply for that larger permit. That would be a fixed permit, just like our normal liquor license that we do with you guys through the brewery.
Rodney, I have a question.
This was a way to get it through for this summer from a technical standpoint because it may be a little unauthorized in the sense that you got so many people, but it's.
Rodney, I have a question for you. Each applicant, the charge for the license is $1,120. So that's?
Times six.
Times six.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was reading that right.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Chair.
So a couple of concerns that I have is, I don't see anywhere in here where it stipulates kind of the hours, the window in which you're going to operate. You know, I feel like, you know, for a kind of pilot project like this, essentially you could do it every day, you know, for those months.
Correct, sir.
So that, I guess I have, I'm a little cautious of, only because, you know, you're out, you're right in front of the library, which, you know, you think of a library, you think of a quiet space. The other part is that, I think that's a nice area to use. For me, I'd feel better if it was kind of contained within that area, only because, you know, I don't know how you can monitor and control such an expansive area that, you know, with it going down the hill.
Correct.
Towards.
The stage down there.
East Oak Street, right. That, I think, you know, if it was in the, in that sloped area, you know, along Steeple Street, one or the other, but to have it kind of be that entire area seems challenging to regulate and control and, you know, monitoring of minors and things.
Yep.
Being slipped alcohol or anything, I find that to be a challenge. You know, I'd prefer kind of specified hours to which that's going to function, so it's not so open-ended on this pilot project. You know, if it does well this year, you know, support it, you see how, where your problems lie, address them for next year. I'm not opposed to it. You know, so the other question I had is, you know, would this be, is it only going to be limited to Knockabout merchandise being sold or are you going to have kind of others participating as well?
Yeah, so from, will only be Knockabout beer being served there. We'll also offer non-alcoholic beverages like soda, spin drift, juice boxes. We've talked to the Board of Health about being able to offer snacks like Uncrustables, popcorn, other snacks of that matter. We've talked to the Commons and the town about using food trucks that would come in. So it would be only Knockabout as the alcohol that be provided there, as well as non-alcoholic beverages that we provide. On the hour front, part of our application was putting those in. It was going to be noon until 9:00 PM. It's just a window to have as far as when we would do it. We'd be working closely with the church in the library to accommodate their activities. I know that there's going to be a bag lunch program that they're doing this summer with the, with the library. We know that there's going to be four o'clock mass on Saturdays that are going to be part of the planning that needs to happen, weddings, so we've talked to the father about those. So our plan is to have these guardrails of when it would happen, but then work with the Commons and our neighbors to ensure that our activity did not deter, take away from what they're going over there. And then as far as the usage of the area, that was, one of the things we're trying to do is build something so that we can support the activity that the Commons is doing, so that we'd have a smaller footprint with the fencing and the temporary roping that would be used on a day where that stage isn't being used, that wouldn't be incorporated into the space. And then our staffing plan would expand when that area was used, so it'd have more managers on the floor, more people monitoring what needs to be happening, walking around, being in charge of it, just like we do at the beer garden here. So our goal would be is that, hey, when it's a normal day, when there's not a concert or activity happening down the stage, we'd have a manager on with the staff doing the service. And if it's a day where we expand that area out, we'd have two or three managers on, walking the floor, monitoring, checking wristbands, because that'll be part of the plan, is that come in, get carded, get wristbanded. That means you're 21, we know that you're able to consume alcohol at that point, and that's a way for us to have a visual cue for when people are consuming alcohol properly or not. And then our training kicks in and our protocols for if someone's breaking those rules.
So your fenced area is, that's the, your maximum space?
Correct, sir.
That you would use at any one time, depending upon an activity?
Correct.
So you would shrink the fenced area?
We would be.
Depending upon?
Correct. So if there was a mass happening, say at four o'clock, we would just be to that asphalt area and a little bit out on the grass, maybe. If there was a concert happening that was going down at the stage, we would then incorporate that area into it, trying to give us the ability to take advantage of the activities that are already happening, because we really see this as a complement to what the Commons is already doing. So that on a normal day, we'd be hanging out on the asphalt patio, asphalt area with the grass and the wooded area behind it, because we see that as a cool space to use. But then on a larger day where there's a big activity happening, that would be incorporated into the plan with managers, fencing, staffing.
I just have one more question. Thank you, you've answered most of my questions. With regard to, so you're going to have beer, wine, soft drinks, what about facilities?
Sure, yeah, great question. It's just going to be beer, there won't be any wine. And the Commons is working to set us up with a porta potty service, as well as working with their Covosa trash service, so that we have hand washing stations, we have bathrooms that will be there, so that the customers and guests are using those facilities and not going into the church or going into the library. That was something we discussed in detail with the library team to make sure that we're, you know, taking their needs into consideration.
So it sounds as though you've had long conversations with both people at the church and at the library.
Yeah, it's kind of, my MO is making sure that I get with all the constituents and players to make sure that we know what they need before we do anything, because no one wants a surprise.
Seems like you've done your homework, it's pretty effective. I know your product, you do a good job, you do a great presentation, you have a great team, work for B&amp;L. I have no problem with this at all.
Thank you.
I'd like to know, is there anybody here in the public that is in a butter, that has something, if you're against what's being proposed? Okay?
Make a motion.
Anybody else?
Do we have to close this?
Oh, there's no, yeah, it was not public. I just wanted to make sure that.
Like to make a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, first and a second? Any discussion? Not hearing any? David?
Just a point of clarity, is this one or all?
All. All.
That's a good point.
Do you need to go through each one?
You know what, yeah, I'll clarify that.
No problem. I don't mean to make more work for you, but I would.
Okay.
Make a reservation for all.
All right, so.
Going to do each one, Tom?
So, so motion?
Motion to approve Beer and Wine Knockabout Beer Company LLC. It states beer and wine.
Oh, I'm sorry, don't say wine.
That's just the general.
LLC Knockabout Gardens at the Commons, 620 through 717, 2023, Peter Murner.
Second.
Okay, first, second, any discussion? Not hearing any? David?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve Beer and Wine Knockabout Beer Company LLC, Knockabout Gardens at the Commons, 718 through 814, 2023, Jeff Conley.
Second.
Good? Comments? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
David?
Motion to approve.
It was, you were a yes, right?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry. And I'm a yes.
Motion to approve liquor license for the same Knockabout Gardens at the Commons, 815 through 911, 2023, Jennifer Conley.
Second.
First, second, any discussion? Not hearing any? Kayla?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve similar Knockabout Gardens at the liquor license for Knockabout Gardens at the Commons, 912 through 109, 2023, Melissa Murner.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, David? Yes?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve similar liquor license approval for Knockabout Gardens at the Commons, 1010 through 116, 2023, Margaret Murner.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? Not hearing any? Kayla?
Yes.
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 Finally, a motion to approve a similar liquor license for Knockabout Gardens at the Commons, 117 through 124, 2023, Leif Rotzart.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? Not hearing any? David?
Yes.
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 Yes. All unanimous?
Thank you guys for your opportunity.
Good luck.
And we'll be back, see you soon.
Discussion and approval of annual proclamation Race Amity Day.
A proclamation Race Amity Day, whereas Massachusetts supports the great seal of the United States of America, which bears the inscripter E. Plumbus Unum, which translates from Latin as "out of many, one." And whereas the greatest asset of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is its people. And whereas friendship, collegial, apology, civility, respect, and kindness are commonly shared ideals of the collective citizenry of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And whereas the towards E., I always get this word. Per. Plumbus?
Pluribus.
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 If you say it first before I get. Pluribus Unum Initiative has invited communities across the United States of America to join in in resurrection, in reflection on the beauty and richness of the diverse people of this great nation while reaching out with. of this great nation while reaching out with spirit of amity toward one another annually on the second Sunday in June. And whereas H. two seven four five, chapter one sixty-three of Acts of two thousand fifteen of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts establishes the second Sunday in June annually as Race Amity Day. And therefore, we, the members of the Mashpee Select Board, do hereby proclaim Sunday, June eleventh, twenty twenty-three, to be Race Amity Day in the town of Mashpee.
Well done. And just as a reminder. Come on, Marie. So Race Amity Day is this Sunday, correct?
My chair is right here.
Just, you know, for the record, one last time to promote it.
Yeah.
The hours are from what?
Just music.
Do you not being shy? I knew it was going to get you up. You're like, no, no, no.
Chair Cotton, the member of the Select Board and everybody. My name is Rovella Five Corn Berry, a co-chair for Race Amity. And here's my co-chair as well, Dan.
Dan Cuffman, Tracy Lee.
All right, so we invite everybody for Race Amity Day this Sunday, June eleventh, from twelve to four P M. Rain or shine. Thank you.
I would just add, we're hoping that members of the Select Board will read the proclamation on Sunday.
On Sunday.
On Sunday.
As was done so beautifully last year.
Thank you.
That's great. Looking forward to it. And again, rain or shine, twelve to four.
No rain.
No rain.
All right.
So you need a motion?
Um, yeah.
For the proclamation.
Yeah.
So, motion to.
Sorry about that.
The third annual Race Amity Day Festival Proclamation.
Second.
Second. First, second, any discussion? Hopefully see everybody there. All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Discussion, approval, proclamation of declare of the week, June eleventh to the seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, as Mashpee Veterans Appreciation Week. And June seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, as Mashpee Veterans Appreciation Day.
A proclamation Veterans Appreciation Week, whereas the town of Mashpee will dedicate a very special monument to our veterans on Saturday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, with a parade starting at Town Hall at ten A M. and a ceremony and unveiling of the monument of the Mashpee Community Park at eleven A M. And whereas the Veterans Monument will contain the names of all two hundred and fifty-two men and women from Mashpee who served in all our nation's wars, from Revolutionary War to Vietnam, including the names of twenty-one who never returned, giving the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas, after four years of research using military, town, state, and tribal records, the monument is completed. And whereas, with this monument, all citizens are urged to remember our veterans' bravery, honor, and sacrifice, and to remember from Mashpee in each of all wars, whom through this monument now have their names internally engraved and granted for all to see and to remember, and no one will ever forget their legacy. And whereas, the monument is historic, as in addition to honoring all our veterans who served for Mashpee in those wars, it's perhaps the only monument in the country that contains the actual names of Native Americans from one town that fought and sacrificed in all of America's wars. And now, therefore, we, members of the Mashpee Select Board, do hereby proclaim June eleventh through June seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, as Veterans Appreciation Week. And further do hereby proclaim Saturday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, to be Veterans Appreciation Day, as a day to witness the unveiling of the Mashpee Veterans Monument to honor the men and women from Mashpee that served in the country's war. Morris?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the Select Board approve of the proclamation declaring the week of June eleventh through seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, as Mashpee Veterans Appreciation Week, and June seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, as Mashpee Veterans Appreciation Day.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Thanks. Great thing.
That's great.
Yes.
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 Great thing. Just out of curiosity, everybody knows that if, if you can make it, love to see everybody there.
And I think there was a request from Richard Disorga to have the Select Board meet and walk in the parade and sit on stage.
Right. So if everyone's aware that all the, everyone received their emails, so it'd be nice if we're all there. All right.
Don't deliver it.
Huh?
Do we need it special?
Communications and correspondence. Good. Old business, new business. Assignment of Select Board Liaisons, twenty-three, twenty-four. I actually have them here just for, as a draft, if we can just pass this over. You can take a peek at it. We'll. We'll adopt them next meeting. And let me see here. Discussion and possible approval of the annual reappointment list, Boards, Commissions, Committees, and Councils. Well, does anybody have any questions on committee list?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the annual reappointments to Boards, Committees, Councils, and Commissions.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Michaela?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. Additional topics. Mr. Collins, was there anything submitted by the school last minute today regarding? Anything that? No?
Not to my knowledge, I spoke to the superintendent.
Okay. Um, okay. So that'd be additional topics, liaisons, liaison reports.
Hi, Jim, from the Harbor Management Committee. They're moving along. They've, they're going to be, they've compiled all of the data they collected at their first meeting, their first public outreach meeting, which consisted of fifty to sixty people. They have two other meetings scheduled for the public, July thirteenth and the twenty-seventh at New Seabury. And more of that will come, more information about those, the exact time will come out. They're working to get updates on the ancient ways to water, working with the Wampanoag Tribe and with the town planner. They're also planning informational pop-up sessions to reach the greatest number of people possible. And, let's see. In order to have this approved, the consultants are assuring us that that community engagement is critical. And as we know, to get this approved through the state is going to position us for substantial funding. So they're, they're moving along. Ashley is doing incredible work as always, and Evan is helping with ideas for engagement. So.
Right. And is it, my understanding that does, in that committee, does that also include drainage and, I mean, not drainage, what do you call it? The, the channels? Dredging? Do you cover dredging in that committee?
They've discussed dredging. Their main focus right now, and everybody on that committee, as well as I know everybody at this table, is aware of the situation with dredging. So they've discussed that. Their primary focus is ensuring that this plan is contributed to by the community and gets moved forward, working with the consultants. But yes, dredging is part of the discussion.
Okay. Any other liaison reports?
I'm good.
Not hearing any. Water quality updates.
Well, I, I don't, I don't think we can leave here tonight in all good conscience without processing some of the public comment we heard. And also, I don't know about other Select Board members, but phone calls that I'm sure you've all received after people have seen the condition of the water this early in the year. I know we can't vote on anything tonight, but it seems as though we could have some conversation about how we can move forward at the next meeting to make sure we take some action at that point. I think the point was made that we, we do need action, and our time, our time is really short if we're looking at August. To miss August would mean you missed a zero percent loan. Interest rates continue to go up. That zero percent loan is going to be extremely important to us to make, to make progress. And I think the point was made that as it is, we're looking at the twenty thirties. If we do something right now, to let another year go by puts us that further behind. As I said, to have the waters that impacted this early in the year, the water temperature is still below sixty. I can't imagine it's going to be like this summer. So I'd like us to be able to leave here with a clear plan to know what we need to do over the next two weeks so that we can vote in two weeks.
I think my concern is where does the Sewer Commission stand?
Right. That's.
And are they on the same page as the Board? Because they have certain statutory authority that quite frankly is quite empowering, as I learned many months ago. But I think having that constructive dialogue and, as a matter of fact, I can reach out to the Chair and to Mr. Jack and find out what they're discussing. And I might have to assign my assistant to attend a couple Sewer Commission meetings.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, because of the timeframe and the urgency, I don't know how far they, I don't, I don't know if they're, because can we request? That's our fund, because the rest are our funds, right?
Yes.
So can we request funds without having a specific?
Well, you've got to have a plan.
That's what I'm saying. So that's, so.
The Sewer, the Sewer Commission is meeting on Tuesday, on Thursday at two o'clock. So that might be an opportunity if it's, if we still can, to be able to have a conversation there.
I will be attending that, that meeting and hopefully we can, I, I just don't know how, how far they're along with deciding going north, going south, if they have, if they're that close to a plan. I don't know. I hope.
Mr. Chair, I, I would suggest, you know, it's been, finding out what's available at the state level. You know, there's a lot of money in the infrastructure bill. And so like, let's take a hard look at that. Ask our, our regional, our state representatives to come in, maybe at our next meeting. Ask them, you know, what's out there for funding at the state level.
Let them know ahead of time what we're looking at.
Yeah. And, you know, I, I think we should even consider, you know, we do declarations and proclamations, declare a state of emergency on our waters, see if that gets the state to do anything further. You know, I'd love to see kind of, you know, full design of at least preliminary designs for wastewater so that, you know, if additional funding comes out over the next year or so, that you have money for shovel ready projects, you know what I mean? So, so I think the design phase is critical to try to move forward on, it'll kind of inform some loans, but, or, or there may be grants out there that maybe we're not looking at, you know. Delegating some, somebody to actually go through all the different grant funding mechanisms to see what's available for grant funding, you know, would be good. That sort of thing, just to keep the conversations going. And maybe every meeting in the next, in foreseeable future, just start bringing people in and expressing concern and, and trying to solicit assistance.
Literally turn up the heat.
Yeah.
Yeah. If I may, I, I do think we need to be mindful of that August eleventh deadline. I mean, if we, and I understand what's been said about the Sewer Commission and we need to work with the Sewer Commission. But as we're talking about bringing people in, if we miss August eleventh, we miss another year of zero percent.
The Sewer Commission has more power than us. We don't have it over them.
No, I.
So they, we have to put pressure on them to tell them we need this done.
Yep. And I just want us to keep in mind, it may not, I don't know how we wait another year, but I keep in mind that August eleventh date, I mean, which is coming quickly, we're in June. So there's only so much time to, there's only so much time to talk about it.
So I would bring them in to, to kind of ask for their guidance on what we should pursue in this round and try to get something out of them. And if, you know, they're not at that point, then provide direction to, you know, we need to get something in, in this round to keep forward progress. And, you know, have the conversation with, with Ray Jack and the Sewer Commission on what direction we should go in.
Would the.
We should have a strategy.
I think we should have the.
If we can bring them in, if we can bring them in at a, you know, and I don't know if it's a, I guess, you know what? I guess we can see how Thursday's meeting goes and if there's a possible time to bring them in for a joint meeting with urgency. I, again, they have to have the plan, so they, they're just not going to have a plan in one meeting.
Well, I had an interesting conversation with Commissioner Mark Forrest not too long ago. And he reminded me, because he was here long before I was regarding the two oh, two oh eight plan. And the two oh eight plan was never intended to be funded only by the towns in Cape Cod. It was intended to be a partnership with the state and the feds. So I have to ask, you know, where have they been? You folks at least have stepped up and gotten phase one going. And I do not dispute that it's needed. I don't think anybody can dispute that. My sole source of frustration is the lack of state and federal responsibility to help us out. This is a natural and native treasure. And to say, well, we're just going to tell you, you're on your own, when this has reached the extent that it has, I think, and I'm just making a suggestion, I, I think we should invite the local politicians in, let them face the music in front of you folks.
But let them know ahead of time what we're looking at so they can bring answers.
Let them try to provide some answers.
Yep.
I, I think it would be good to even ask our state representatives to come in as well and maybe, you know, not chime in, but sit in the audience and maybe be available for the meeting to at least hear the concerns that were, you know, we're at a critical point, you know? And these are shared resources. You know, Mashpee is, the, the resources we're talking about, they're not just utilized by Mashpee residents, you know, they're shared resources. And, you know, this is just the beginning of a problem that I think all of the Cape is experiencing, but Mashpee's the furthest. Our, our stuff is the worst. So, you know, if you're going to require attention, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the oil. So, you know, we need to say it loud, get everybody's attention, that these shared resources are impeded to a point where it's, you know, twenty thirty, that, that, that's a long way away. And a lot can happen between then and now as far as, you know, how bad this toxic stew is brewing here in Mashpee. So we need everyone's help. I agree, you know, hold, hold their feet to the fire, you know, the two oh eight program. You know, the 208 program, Mashpee Pond's actually, you know, the state, you know, is, is, is a, a great pond. So, you know, there's state responsibility's there too, as well. And, um, you know, what are they doing? Their regulations have been inadequate and, as well as our own, to preserve and protect the water. So, you know, it's everyone's problem. It's not just our problem.
It is everybody's problem, but we forget, we had the federal, federal funding that came to us after COVID and the federal government sent all of our money. It went, a lot of the money went to our county government. And where it went after that, I have no clue. But I mean, that would, this was the perfect opportunity to grab that money and everybody, every town on Cape Cod should have got a large portion of that funding and cleaned up the, their systems, whether it be denitification systems or wastewater treatment plants, whatever. But they did nothing. The money went somewhere else. And that's what, that's something that should have been addressed at that time. Now we're looking for new funding. I mean, the one thing that we've been looking at, we'd all been aware, a former, uh, individual that worked on, on the Mashpee River. The Mashpee River, my, my thing is, it's been green forever. It's not getting better, it's getting worse. But I mean, no one's ever done anything. We've talked about dredging for this and everybody said dredging's not gonna work. But we never did anything. And now we have, we, we watched the, the plume come down and it's nothing but a green mass that goes down this, this, this year. Every year is worse. And, and they're all bad. They're all bad. I mean, it's just long overdue, nothing ever happens. And we were told dredging's not gonna do anything. A lot of the discharge pipes that, that are, they go into the Mashpee River. Those pipes are, they, they don't direct them in, but it's, uh, 100 yards away is where that, the pipe discharges. And all these, um, condominium projects or, or units for St. Mashpee Commons, their pipe goes right there. That's where their wastewater treatment plant, so you know where it is. And then that discharge is right there. And downhill is where it goes, downhill to the, to the river. That should be addressed. That should be sent down to the, to the beach somewhere and out into the ocean. You know, where the, where the, where the, the river, the waters move. Down here, they don't move. It's, it's a tidal, it's, it's a, it's a, it's something that needs help. It can't be done by itself. We see the plume, I get on there at least once a day with my granddaughter. It's not getting any, any better, but it's not been getting better for as long as I've been here. I've been here for 30 years. It's not getting any better. It only gets worse. Everybody says everything is gonna happen, nothing ever happens. I mean, it just doesn't. It takes forever.
But I think, I think it's, it's accelerating though, because since 2020 and COVID, you have more year-round residents. The, the environment does not have any chance to breathe and, and heal at all. The year-round residency is just off the charts. And it's gonna, it's gonna get worse faster. It absolutely is. And so, you know, that's where we need to kind of declare like a state of emergency or, or crisis on, on, on the current waters. You know, it, it's gonna take drastic measures to, to address it.
Construction, you stop construction, is that what you do?
I don't have the, I don't have the answers, because it's coming from so many different point sources.
That's not gonna happen.
I, no, but there's a lot of things we can do. I just think we have to do a lot of, a lot of little things.
But it's the only thing that you could probably control that would, would stop it.
Alright. Go ahead, Kayla.
Thank you. Um, so we've, we've generated a lot of really good ideas. I mean, bringing in local politicians, bringing in state reps, reaching out to the feds, a proclamation of a state of emergency. I think all of those are really important. I really want us to be mindful, if we can't make the 60-day deadline, then we can't. But I want us to be mindful that we have an opportunity to do something within 60 days. I understand we need to work with the Sewer Commission. I understand that it's their purview. I'm not saying we can just do this, but I, I know how fast 60 days goes by. So I think we should at least, I think we should talk about talking to the Sewer Commission prior to the next board meeting and bringing this to the next board meeting and having somebody from the Sewer Commission present how close they are. How close they are to having a plan for maybe not the next full phase, but maybe a piece of it. What could we move forward possibly so we can get 0% funding? It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be all of, you know, it doesn't have to be all 2F or 2A or 2B or 2C. What can be done and what, how can we move that forward? So we don't miss out on 0% funding and we don't miss out on another year. If we do everything we can and we just can't possibly make that date, well then we'll miss the date saying we have done everything we possibly can to make this happen. But I think to set other long-range plans really detracts from the fact that this date is 60 days away and we're still sitting here mumbo. So I would request that we do that.
I think, I think one, one other thing that, um, I don't know if there's a model out there to do it, but, um, what if we were to utilize like a CDFI, a community development, uh, financial institution to try to, uh, get credits? Tax credit. It's a tax credit program, but if you were to use that to fund major projects, I mean, it, it's, it's community-based. And so I don't know if there's a mechanism out there to do it or where the model is, but looking into, you know, partnerships like that, you know, to push the 208 initiatives and, and anything else. I think the funds that we got through the county, wasn't that ARPA funds?
Yes.
I mean, there's, but at the, the state got a substantial amount of, uh, infrastructure bill funds. Above and beyond the ARPA funds. So what's going on with that? Where is that at? Where, where's the infrastructure bill money? You know, wastewater is infrastructure. That, that's a part of it. So, you know, we need to put pressure on the state and, and, and to get a portion of that. Because Cape Cod is a regional resource. What is the state gonna have for revenues if our, if, if, if the Cape Cod's waters are, are so bad that people are getting turned off and don't want to come here? You know, things are gonna turn around real quick then. And, you know, when the terrorism starts getting affected. So, you know, that's, that's where I'm at with it. You know, we have to, the state has to come in and help this.
Right. And that's what, you were right dead on with the ARPA funds and that's it. And that's one of the reasons why I left, because it was seen to have been redirected for another use. And I thought that the best use would have been for everybody to have it to use to clear up their wastewater and put in, uh, new systems, collection systems.
I'm not gonna cry over spelt milk, you know, that's water under the bridge at this point, so, you know. Let's, let's look at the infrastructure bill and find out what's going on with that and start advocating strongly for our regional funding.
Agreed.
Town manager updates?
Yes, um, October Town Meeting Warrant Articles. Deadline is, uh, Monday, July 10th. That's not the board's deadline, but that's the, uh, the general deadline. As you've already mentioned, uh, just as a reminder, Race Amity Day is Sunday, June 11th, and the dedication of the Veterans Memorial is Saturday, June 17th. Dean R. is working on scheduling a presentation from, um, UMass Dartmouth for the purposes of, um, giving you some updated info. I think that includes Shoestring Bay, correct? We did have a meeting with some frustrated people, speaking of dredging, at the library, uh, the other evening. And, uh, tried to, uh, provide, uh, direct and honest answers in regards to the fact that, uh, the town doesn't control mechanical failures, staffing shortages, pipe employers arriving, uh, and we don't control, uh, the weather. With that having been said, um, we understood that, uh, maybe the county will work with us to, uh, coordinate, uh, the scheduling and to try to make sure that our window, which is essentially, uh, December to February, kind of moves up a little bit rather than being at the end of February, because it always seems that, uh, we're behind the eight ball every single year. So we're trying to address that. And I thought that the county officials who did show up, uh, were very responsive. And, uh, um, everybody that, uh, spoke, I think, was, uh, being very collaborative in terms of trying to help us work on a, an effective schedule. For those that did not know this, uh, we had a lot of malfunctions and dysfunctions today in our email system. IT is, uh, working on it, uh, but it was, uh, very, very frustrating. Emails, you couldn't send them out, you couldn't, uh, open them up. I think it was throughout the majority of the day. So if somebody wrote to me today, uh, may not have read it. Not because I was busy, not that I wasn't, it's just I couldn't open it up. So there was a source of frustration and we are working on it. That's all I had.
Alright. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.